So I am going to turn it over to Mr. Sark for some staff introduction here.
Yeah, I'm gonna be fairly brief. As you know, in 2018, not just the HRA, but the HRA, the city and the EDA all adopted this inclusionary housing policy. The policy really reflected a lot of what had been practiced for a number of years, if not decades prior. You know, a couple of main points in the policy are that when a development receives any public assistance, that they have to provide 20% of the housing, at least, to houses households earning no more than 60% of the area median income, and that the duration of that would be for the life of the subsidy or 10 years. In a work session last year, we discussed kind of some points that we wanted to keep pursuing on this, that we wanted to keep looking into. And the intention of SEF had been to come back in March, actually the March 16th, I think, HRA meeting. And, you know, the world as we know it kind of came to an end around March 15th. And so that just never happened, as had been the intention. And so we are now coming back to, really to look at any, all, some of the points in the inclusionary housing policy, seeing if you believe that they're still valid. If you would like to make changes, seeing what you're hearing from your, from folks you know, you know, constituents, other groups, talk a little bit about how we feel like we can engage folks, which will be a challenge, and, you know, more or less advance the ball a little bit on the inclusionary housing policy. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Housing Manager Julie Urban, who I think is going to maybe take us through a PowerPoint.
I am. I'm gonna share it here. Give me a second.
Commissioner Sandell, you have a question? Commissioner Sandell, did you have a question?
No, just a comment that I heard maybe every third or fourth word that John said. I can, Julie, did come in clear, we'll see.
Well, I guess let us know if I'm not coming through clear. So, all right, John kind of gave the setup for our inclusionary housing policy. So this is just kind of what we'll talk about tonight. I just have a brief slide about our existing affordability. I think it's important to sort of revisit those numbers. And then we'll take a kind of a review of the policy as it is and the different things you raised last year as potential changes, as well as a few new things that we've heard so far. And then we'll talk about sort of our ideas for getting some more community feedback. That was the information we'd heard from the HRA in July was that, you know, we should listen to a little bit more input before we move forward. And then finally, if we have time, we'll sort of review our overall apartment work plan. But we'll see what we have time for. So this is just the data and gives our numbers. So I use this as American Community Survey data, which is a five-year compilation, and it actually just is, goes back to 2018. So it's not, so it's a little bit old, but it's the best that we can get from the Met Council, who does the nice breakdown of the data by the different income categories. I'm working on getting some more current data for us, but right now it's kind of pricey. So I'm working to find a way for us to access different data. But so this is just a reminder of sort of where we're at in terms of our existing rental housing affordability. And again, it is from 2018, so it's not going to show us the Chamberlain numbers or Henley 1, so some of those newer developments. But, and this has kind of been our story for much of, much of our history, but that we are very low on the lowest affordable housing, that less than 30% AMI. It's typically maybe subsidized housing with services. We also are low on the other end, where we don't have a lot of move-up or luxury housing. We have the bulk of our housing is really NOAA housing. It's in that 31% to 50% of the area median income. And then also that 51% to 60% also is where we have the bulk of our units. So that number has been shrinking. However, I would say from 2013, we had 41% of our housing was in the 31% to 50% category, and now it's down to 33%. So there is some shifting that's going on. And I would just also point out some other context for us to remember is that the Met Council sees that we have a share of new affordable housing units that we should provide to the region, and that is a range of 67 to 121 units over the next 10 years. So, again, so the revisions that you brought up last year and that we talked about and that you said we should move forward on and get some more information. The first was how can we encourage and provide that deeper affordability? Again, that less than 30% AMI where we are short units compared to other, other communities and the Hennepin County as a whole. The other thing you wanted us to move forward was looking at how do we encourage more accessible units, physically accessible units? How do we encourage a mix of bedroom sizes? To date, much of our affordable units that we've gotten through our inclusionary housing policy, both informally and formally, have been efficiencies or one bedrooms. The other thing we took a look at was applying the policy to all public land sales. The current policy says that we only apply it if we offer a subsidy. And then we wanted to look at, should we be applying the policy to all new construction? Up until a year ago, we had never had a project that happened in the city without our financial assistance, not this kind of a project anyway. But now all of a sudden, we have two, the Novo and Lunds, that are moving forward without our assistance. And so you wanted to take a look at, should we be applying this as an ordinance instead of a policy? And so we'd looked at some different triggers for that with our city attorney. And, but you were, all of you were interested in what the impact of that would be. You didn't want to see it stop development. And so that's kind of where the, where's the sweet spot, you know, where, how far could we go with our requirements before we would cause developers to look elsewhere to provide housing? So those were the things that we had done some research on and were ready to bring back to you in March. But some of the additional items that were brought up, first one, replacement housing, it actually was brought up last year, but it, I don't know if it did make the list. I don't think it got discussed enough, and so maybe it kind of got lost. And so I wanted to bring it back. But there is a provision in there that if non-housing developments were to remove affordable housing, that it should be replaced somewhere or some sort of in-lu payment made. And Louisville's Councilmember Whalen was suggesting that why is it just non-housing, that it should be any kind of development that came in and took out affordable housing should replace that housing? So that's something that we'd need further discussion on. The in-lu payment has been raised several times. Currently, the in-lu payment is 15% of the value of the tax increment that would be generated. And I know a lot of you have, there's a lot of restrictions on how we can use increment, and we're limited to that 15%. And a lot of you said, you know, why can we be charging more? Can we, can we be collecting more? Can we collect it in a different way? And so just want to put that back on the list. And then length of time for affordability has been raised. And then also a minimum size threshold, and I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a minute. So, um, so to go back to the ideas that were raised last year and that we did some work on was the idea of encouraging deeper affordability. And so the way, I think two other communities do some of this, St. Louis Park does, and sorry, let me find my notes. They have a chart where the deeper the affordability.
Excuse me, Julie?
Yep.
All right, excuse me, Ms. Urban. I just, I'm checking. I just got a message from a resident. They said they're not able to, to see the video live streaming on the, on the city or on the YouTube page. And I wasn't sure if we're planning on relaying it or if that was just something that, that somebody administratively could address. Sorry to interrupt.
No, thank you for doing that. Is Jay non? Is she?
We haven't been streaming the work sessions.
Okay, we're just recording them? Okay.
I'll let them, I'll let them know. Thank you.
I believe we record them, and then they're available at a later time for playback. Is that right, Latonya?
Yes.
Well, if you want to get contact information, Councilmember Troutman, we can make sure to send them a link so that they can find it.
We, I will, I will do just that. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, I'm glad you did, because I, yeah, I wasn't aware of that. I thought we did stream the work sessions. So anyway, the idea would be to, that maybe the affordability requirement would be less if they were to provide deeper affordability. And so this is a proposal. This, these, this number breakdown is what St. Louis Park proposes. And so I just throw that out there as something, just to show an example. Edina has a lesser credit. They do 20% at 60 or 10% at 50. Minneapolis's changes based on whether you receive city financing or not, city financing. And, but City of Bloomington, I believe, is still 9% across the board. So I think it's helpful sometimes to see what our neighboring communities are doing with their policies, even though we like to remind you that we are different markets, and so we have to be aware of that.
Can we pause for a second on that?
Sure, yeah.
Going back to that one?
Yeah, I guess if you want to discuss as we go, I, we can do it that way, however you want to.
I was just curious, with the 30% of AMI at 5%, does that take us out of some other things that like, say you have to have 20% of something? So I'm just wondering, is there a conflict between requirements?
So, thank you for pointing that out. I did mean to mention that. One of the drawbacks here is that housing TIF districts, which is what we use, is either 20% at 60% AMI or 20% at 50%. So you wouldn't be allowed to go lower down to, you know, provide lesser units at 30% in a housing TIF district. And that, and that's could be problematic. 30% units are expensive, which we'll talk about in a little bit. And how would we, you know, how would we ever get to that income level with, using a TIF district? We probably wouldn't. We did do some initial work with the legislature this year, this session. We worked with LISC and some other communities to talk about, how can we get some more flexibility so that we can do a better job providing 30% units? And, and then the pandemic hit, and the legislature just didn't take up any of that kind of stuff anymore. So that's certainly something that the city manager has talked about, that we need to start laying the groundwork for that. Whether the next year's legislature will be able to address some of those items, I don't know. But we'll keep it on the list. But so, so it doesn't necessarily conflict, but unless we have other outside resources, we're going to have difficulty getting to that 30% level.
Okay, because I just want to make sure that we're realistic in figuring out ways that we can get to it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't think we have answers for that. A lot of communities, we talk about that issue, and, you know, we're trying to work together to think of ways. And I think it's, we need more resources, and we're going to need some flexibility from the legislature. And so we need to keep working. So, so I think that's a good reminder, too, that this is one tool. And just because we put it in the inclusionary housing policy, doesn't mean we'll, we'll get it. That this has, this tool has to be paired with other things as well. I think if we're going to achieve what we're hoping to achieve. Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up, because I was in my notes, and I just looked right over them.
Okay, are other commissioners and council members wanting to ask questions before we move on?
Yes.
Councilmember Whalen, and then I heard another voice as well. Go ahead, Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Chair Seppel. I wanted to ask a follow-up question on that point. If, knowing how the TIF rules stand now at the state level, if we were to change our policy to say this, would there be, would that cause conflicts, or would it just be unlikely until the TIF rules are changed, that anyone would pick the 5% to 30% option, and they would continue to do the 20 at 50 they've been using most often?
Right, the second, your second point, that they're, they're more likely to pick the other option just because it is so expensive to do those 30% units.
Okay, thank you. And then one other comment, and I know Julie and I had emailed a bit about this. I thought we were going to wait till the end for comments, but on the statistics, just want to remind folks what we had discussed at the January meeting, on the, the numbers for what has happened in the last, like, year, what is in the works. That Julie had shared the, the most recent spreadsheet that we have about taking off Lyndale Plaza, since that was now eight years ago, and would be included in the numbers from that council. The thing is, in the last, since 2019, we've got about 900 new market rate units, and only about 50 rental affordable units. So that includes, sorry, some of that is home ownership.
I'm going to try to pull up that chart. It's a little busy for this purpose, but sorry, I didn't have a chance to mess with it, so it'd be more helpful.
But just to, to remind folks that we, since we have had this policy, well, in the last two years, I know it's been a practice before that, but that our recent construction were still, I think it was either 4% or 6% affordable is what our outcomes are. So yeah, if you take out that top line that was back in 2012, that's already accounted for. That in, kind of toward the bottom corner where it says 69, that 19 of those are in Lyndale Plaza, that's only 50 new affordable rental units. I know there's some rehabs as well, which is great, but is a slightly different goal. So just think it's important that we remember the impact we're having so far in the, the construction phase, which who knows what the pandemic will do, but that we are getting a lot of market rate. The one follow-up question that I, I had Julie after seeing this, do you have a sense at all, even like a ballpark range? The Met Council data is all in percentages. Do you know, like, if this is almost 1,000 units total, is that, like, how that compares in size to the percentages? Are those accounting for 10,000 units, or do we have any guess?
For Richfield numbers, you mean? Um, sure, I can. Um, no, if I, what I'd have would be too confusing. We have about 5,000 apartments, 5,200, I think, when you add in the Chamberlain now. About 700 of those are seniors, and I consider that sort of a different discussion. So if you take that out, what we're down to, what, maybe 4,500 units? And so you can apply those percentages roughly to that, if that's helpful. But I can get you numbers as well, if you'd like.
So just to, yeah, I think that'd be helpful, but just to note that if we, if we were at 4,500, which includes the Chamberlain, then that's still another 600 or so getting added, that that's a significant chunk being added in the works, and that that's going to play a role on these percentages. And so I think, I think they are going to be shifting even more rapidly than they have been as the data gets updated. So sorry to spend a lot of time on that, but I think that is important context.
No, and thank you. I know you had brought that up earlier in the day, and I, I should have mentioned that. But the other thing, Commissioner Sandell had requested is just how do we compare to like our peer communities? And so I also have that data, and I can provide that to people as well, if you're interested in that, just to see how we are relative to specific communities.
All right, thank you. I had heard other voices, but I can't see everybody's faces. So if there's another question, just go ahead and ask it, and then we'll move on.
I had one question.
Okay, go ahead. I think that's Commissioner Sandell.
Yes, thank you. Julie, you mentioned the two proposals going forward, housing proposals that are not requesting city dollars. One was Lunds. What was the other one?
The Novo, that's at, sorry, we, we need to get a map, to help you with that. Where these are located.
I know where Lunds is.
It's at Queen and 66th Street, so behind CVS, to the west of CVS. Yep.
Yeah.
So both on the west side, where the rents per square foot are higher. Yeah, so, so the other piece we've talked about a lot is encouraging accessible units. And so I had thrown out to the HRA, and then we decided not to move forward until we had more discussion. But the idea of, well, we could require some, you know, 1% of fully accessible units. And I picked that number out because the Henley, you know, that was just, that was kind of a no big deal for them in terms of cost, or, you know, so that that would be something that we could, we could get done, and it wouldn't discourage development. But the other option, when I was speaking or emailing back and forth with Judy Mo from ARDAP, was the idea that the Chamberlain has, I think it's 15 units, and there's some roll-in showers, and seemingly accessible units. And I've seen people in wheelchairs in the building, so that appear to be residents. But anyway, what that is, is that there's what's called type A units, and that's 2% of all new buildings are required to have type A units. And, and those are, is handicapped-ready units. Anyway, what, the, the kind of financing that the Chamberlain got was HUD financing, and HUD requires 5% type A units. So that would be another option that we could consider, and we could talk a little bit more, and maybe that's for a future work session, about the, the specific differences between the two. What's something that's fully accessible, which does have some cost to it? I had one developer, just one developer, got the, a quote from it, says about $5,000. And she's talking quite a few accessibility sorts of requirements that would be that cost. Whereas the Chamberlain developer says that type A, to create a type A unit, really doesn't have a lot of cost to it. And so, again, if we're looking for things that wouldn't discourage or require us to put resources into it, you know, I think either one of those kinds of requirements, you know, a few accessible, fully accessible, or more type A, you know, I think that we wouldn't discourage development, but would still get some more units. And so we can keep talking about that. So then the idea of a mix of bedroom sizes, being proportional to the mix of what's market rate, again, to get beyond just having efficiency units. And I think we all really would like to see that. The cost is, is pretty great. And where I came up with my numbers were to look at a couple of our existing developments, the Chamberlain and Enclave, and I think I had one other, the Henley. Anyway, so looking at, when you compared the cost and the rents collected for efficiency versus a one-bedroom versus a two-bedroom, is that you've got a $60,000 to $70,000 per unit difference in cost. And so it is a substantial cost to, to provide those larger units. And so that's something, you know, I guess we'd have to think about if we build that into our requirements, is, would we then discourage development and/or do we have to come up with more resources? If that's our, you know, if we decide that's our value, that's really important, how do we, how do we make that happen? And can we find resources to make it happen? And then the other issue that we talked about is just, so we have some public lands, and when we sell that land, the way that the current policy reads is that if we are basically selling it at a subsidy to the developer, then they have to provide affordability. But if we were to sell at market rate, for example, we wouldn't. And so I think that's potentially a simple fix, you know. When we own a property, that is maybe our best opportunity to get affordability. I think that's what we're kind of thinking about 6501 Penn, for example, that we own it. And that's maybe, that's a really great opportunity when we have that kind of control to get more affordability on that kind of a project. What I would encourage you to think about is sometimes what we own are very small properties. And is there a point, we currently say any development, five units or more, should follow the inclusionary housing policy. And I just have some hesitation when I, in trying to come up with a development for the Portland Roundabout parcel, that's by City Hall there, that it's very challenging with such a small unit count, and to add additional layers of requirements could mean that we don't end up with infill projects. And so I just want you to think about that. Our five-unit requirement is the smallest of the peer communities. I believe Edina is 10, or St. Louis Park is 10, Edina is 20, and I can't remember what Bloomington is. But anyway, so that is something to think about.
Chair Seppel, may I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I, I, this is kind of a hypothetical, because it's already happened. But I'm curious, if we were to apply this to all public land sales, how would that have been applied to the five houses that went up for the land we sold over by 35W?
So that falls under our scattered site, single-family program, and we look at a three-year. So over the period of three years, are we doing 20% affordable?
So would we done? Yeah, if we had applied this to all public land sales, it wouldn't have applied to that development? Because it's scattered site?
Right, it sort of falls under that difference, different deal. Because we had done two Habitat houses, the same year period, as well as a couple of land trusts. So yeah, so our share of of affordable is, is much higher than 20% actually for scattered sites. Thank you.
Councilmember Whalen?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask quickly, and I apologize, I couldn't find the exact language. Is this not, for the specific question at the end there about these like smaller parcels, doesn't this policy, I think a lot of our policies have something that's like, I don't know, that there's some discretion for like when an exception may apply? Could we, so couldn't it as written, like, if a lots, like, I mean, if that's specifically lot, if there was a proposal, and we were going to sell it at subsidy, so it would already trigger the inclusionary housing policy? Wouldn't it, if they, like, the numbers didn't line up, and it seemed like, man, we're not going to get anything there, wouldn't there already be the flexibility to decide that we would not apply this in that instance?
Yep, that's true. You could, you could go down that path. Yep. If that's how you wanted to look at it. Yep, that's a good point. Part of it, too, is, is we've looked into compliance, because now that we have this policy, we have to make sure everybody's complying, and it's, it's complicated and to do that. And so if you are somebody doing just a small project, you just might not be interested in that compliance. So the exception might be that we don't necessarily monitor them every year, or, yeah. So, so there could be some flexibility that you could consider. I'd want to just reread that language. I don't have it in front of me, too, just to make sure we feel comfortable as staff that that would be something we could bring to you to say it deserves an exception under that rule.
While we're pausing here for questions, so did I understand you correctly that type A means that it's just ready to be made accessible easily?
Uh, yep, so there's certain doorway widths that are wider for type A. But you, instead of having grab bars ready, you maybe just have the infrastructure behind the tile in the bathroom to add a grab bar. You have, you can include a kitchen cabinet under the sink, but it has to be able to be removed, like roll out or something, same in the bathroom. And so, so those were kind of some of the differences. And then there's this kind of mysterious, you know, sometimes you might be able to meet sort of the rules with a roll-in shower, but maybe you don't have to have one. It, it can get a little bit complicated with the type A stuff. But in general, those were the, the big differences.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me see if I wrote down any more about that. I, I do have a chart that I could share about that. So, and if we want to talk further about accessibility, we can share that. And then I think that's where the public input piece would be good, is to, to query people with physical disabilities to say, so, you know, what, what works for you? You know, with type A, type A would probably get a lot of people places, but not everyone. It wouldn't be enough, right? So then, you know, there'd be a question of, if we applied this policy, we made it an ordinance, and the trigger would probably be in the case of a rezoning or a request for a Comp Plan Amendment, then they would be required to follow this policy. So I think that, you know, just some points to throw out there. Affordable units do require a subsidy, and those, that subsidy can be, excuse me, could be through market rents that are high enough to subsidize rents at a lower level, or it can be through government assistance, right? I think that typically in Richfield, we have had our that typically in Richfield, we have had our rents per square foot that can be financed and can be appraised, haven't been quite enough to support affordable units. So, you know, what that could mean is that a Lunds had we required them, although Lunds probably wouldn't have, sorry, that wouldn't be a good example because they were zoned already appropriately, but the Novo had a rezoning change, I believe, right? And so if we would have required them, would they then have come to us to say, well, we need tax increment, we need help to do that? And so then we have to ask ourselves, you know, is that how we want to use our resources to provide the subsidy in that case? Or do we want to take the benefit of that project immediately going on the tax rolls and helping to diversify our tax base and help folks that way? So that's sort of one of the questions to think about. And then just that sometimes tax increment is not enough to get there because there may be extraordinary, like in the case of the enclave, they're struggling with that issue because of the, the high cost of redevelopment and that land cost, right? And so do we look for outside resources? And just that there's a lot of competition for those outside resources. And we just have to keep that in mind. Again, just because we want these units doesn't mean we would successfully compete for the resources that would help provide them. So, and, you know, again, just a reminder that there are some benefits to market rate developments that don't subsidy. And that's sort of a new thing for us that we haven't had the benefit of, that the Novo and Lunds will immediately be contributing to the tax base. And then just to remind you that, you know, we have a lot of other city goals too, that we're always working towards. And so trying to balance all those goals, these are some of the ones that we had a work session a couple of years ago and just talked about, you know, why do we redevelop? And, and there's a lot of things. And so again, as policymakers, you have to decide sort of how do you balance all those different things. And this last one, just that the new market rate development does increase supply. And there is, I think last time I proposed that increasing the supply can help potentially lower rents and, or stabilize rents and NOA housing. And then somebody did share a study that suggested that that filtering from those higher units doesn't occur, or they haven't seen that. So you can see, I've got two different studies that show the different things. So whether there's a filtering effect from all that new market rate housing units is still, I guess, an unknown. I do think that it probably reduces some of the pressure on our existing NOA housing, you know, would the concierge have happened if we'd had enough of that kind of housing already? I don't know the answer to that. It's just, those are the things I read and want to you as food for thought, I guess.
Thank you. Executive Director Starkid, you had your hand up. Did your point get taken care of?
I just wanted to mention, you know, Housing Manager Urban had talked about the Novo and Lunds being two projects that have happened without subsidies. You know, Lunds is a little unusual in that they owned the underlying land, so they had no land costs whatsoever. And so, you know, I, I think that's its own thing. So it's, it's really only the Novo that has occurred to date that happened without public subsidy. So it's a bit of a new phenomenon for us. In the past, and I'm not saying this is right, or, or is still the case, in the past, we looked at a, a housing project happening without subsidies as a victory, you know, as, as something to show that, you know, Richfield maybe its place in the market as a whole was improving. Of course, your place in the market as a whole improving doesn't help when you're earning the low end of the spectrum. But I just want to make that point.
Okay, thank you. I, I can't see very many people, so it's hard to know who's raising their hand. So these are some of the, whoops, I, there we go. These are some of the things that have come up then, since we talked last year. So to discuss the idea of the in loop payment and-
Sorry to interrupt. We might have had one more question on the prior slide.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Councilmember Trumpman, I just wanted to, to, to mention, we had talked just briefly about accessibility, accessible housing, and whether or not it would make sense to, to look at, at the HUD standards or other options to, to, to increase the opportunity from one, from 1%. And I, I don't know if you were looking for feedback on that topic or not, but it just seems like that, that would be a good direction for us to, to look in. And, and so I just want, I just didn't want, want to let that go by without just expressing support for that idea.
Sorry, for accessibility in general, or fully accessible versus, or type A, which do you?
Well, I think, well, I think both. Well, it seems that type A creates an opportunity for us to maybe create a greater capacity for when, for when the needs there. But for, but for both.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, please just interrupt me. I just, I can't see more than three of you at a time over there. So, so the other things to look at that we, we just haven't done as much sort of worker into, but just the idea of that in loop payment and is it sufficient? Can we, can we charge more? The length of affordability is something else that was brought up by, I think it was Community Housing Team, is just the 10 years. So the current requirement is either the length of the TIF district or 10 years, whichever is longer. So TIF districts tend to be, they're 26 years in length. So to us, that was a pretty long period of affordability, but we, we have seen a couple of districts recently that either end early, or we have them that are to end sooner than 25 years. So we wouldn't get that long of affordability. I think there, something to think about is just compliance. We, we would no longer have that TIF payment to withhold if they're not in compliance. And so it just becomes a little bit more complicated to ensure that compliance. John, is there, was there another point about that that you brought up? Or was that the compliance issue?
I think there was, but I, it's escaping me at the moment.
Okay. Again, these are all items that we need a little direction and then we can come back with some more information. And so maybe we'll remember what that point was. But then that replacement policy issue-
I do, sorry, I do remember the other one. A lot of times, other than TIF, one of our tools for affordability is putting a second mortgage on properties that require some affordability. Those mortgages, though, for whatever reason, banks, and they usually get put out at a 15 or 18 year term. And so, again, that would be the, the outside. And to go further than 15 or 18 years would be difficult. Or if somebody paid off that second mortgage that required the affordability, it would be difficult. So again, just trying to give you some of the practicalities of, of the policy.
Okay. And then that replacement policy, and I think I talked last time. If there's anything else to add with that, but that's where we currently say non-housing development that removes housing has to replace it. And, you know, that's something that kind of goes back to the Best Buy project. And that's where our Housing and Redevelopment Fund really came to life, was that they were taking out housing. And we said, well, you need to replace that housing. At that point, we really were primarily interested in really just the number of housing units. We had just suffered such a loss of housing. So New Fordtown and Rich Acres and 77th Street and other things that just to lose that housing, we said, no, we have to have a way to, to replace that housing. And as the HRA has always done since the beginning of its mission, some of it should be affordable. So that's, that's not a new thing. And so that's kind of where that came from. The idea is, I think, do we expand that to any development that takes out affordable housing?
By knowledge, however, there's no really great way to inventory affordable housing. And so we would have to, with each project, we'd have to do some examination to see what's being taken out. You know, there's been some, some hesitancy to have a very finite inventory and start labeling houses as affordable, not affordable. And so, again, just a practicality we would have to work through.
I think we'd want to come up with some examples of how it would apply and where, just so you could sort of think through if there are unintended consequences or not. And then that minimum project size, which I've said before, if we wanted to revisit that again, I, I'm coming at that from, again, that practical, as I've been working on the compliance issue and realizing that it's, it's not always simple. And folks aren't always very knowledgeable about it. So, you know, is there a point where it's just a little bit too small of a project to be going through that?
Before we go on, are there any comments that anyone or questions that anyone would like to make? Okay, Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you. I did find, because I think it is relevant to a couple of these things, in the current policy and not proposed to change, the exact wording is the City Council or Board of Commissioners of the Housing and Redevelopment, Redevelopment Authority, or Economic Development Authority, may vary the application of this policy as circumstances warrant with the adoption of findings of the reasons for doing so. So to me, that seems incredibly open-ended, which I, on the plus side, gives us a fair amount of flexibility. But I, I think with how open-ended that is, I'd be extremely hesitant to, I think it's important to know all of the limitations and the barriers we might come up against. But I'd be pretty hesitant to loosen the requirements of the policy for some of these cases that might come up, rather than having the policy state our sort of best hoped-for outcome, and then make exceptions if needed, since we have that ability in the current way it is written. The other thing I'll say quickly, I know, and again, I, I staff have informed me, and I know we're not the same market as St. Louis Park, but their, their policy is for 25 years of affordability. And so I'd be curious to hear like how they manage compliance or what the tools are to ensure that that is followed through on. So that, like, we, we aren't the only ones trying to do this.
So they've hired a consultant, and their name escapes me right now, who prepared sort of a guidance to them. And I can't remember if they are doing this, or we're thinking of it requiring developers to, to basically hire consultants, teach them how to do it. In terms of ongoing tracking, I can't remember exactly. But so I have had some discussions with other communities about what they're doing. And so, yeah, there are certainly ways, we just, you know, given staff resources, just, just be aware that it, it is, it does add, add, add work to do, to, to do that, to, to track and both, on both sides, on our side as well as the developer's side. And, and there was quite a bit of a learning curve for one of our developers when they just weren't really familiar with how to do that work. So it's just, again, just trying to point out to you that there are some practical things that we as staff think about. But, yeah, you, you may or may not see it as a reason to change things or not change things. So just wanted to talk about progress to date. We had a call with a couple of you one few weeks ago, and just to say, well, you know, we should be sure that we know, you know, what we've accomplished with both our policy as well as like our Housing and Redevelopment Fund. And I, I don't have the info on the Housing and Redevelopment Fund yet at this point. But just to show you what the progress has been with the policy. And this is the official policy. So as you know, the HRA has informally followed a policy since Best Buy, since 2000 or 2001. But this is the formal policy. You've approved the Henley 2. And there's 82 new units of market rate housing. Plus, they purchased the adjacent NOA building and where there'll be 22 improved preserved units. So five of the new units will be affordable at 50% AMI. And at least 18 of the 22 of NOA will be preserved and improved, well, they'll all be improved. But 18 will be income qualified at 50% AMI. They will have, they'll end up with one type A unit, and then they've promised to do one of those. So one of their two type A units will actually be fully accessible. In terms of the planning stages, the Enclave is proposed to be 150 units, and they're looking at the in loop payment. They've been exploring providing actual units. But yeah, they're working on that. The ME, they are in the process of increasing the number of units that they were approved for a couple of years ago. And under this new proposal, they're looking at trying to provide eight affordable units at 60%. So these, again, are in planning stages, so we, we don't have results for these yet at this point. And then 6501 Penn, just got a capacity study back that suggests 69 units is what could fit there. And what we're trying to explore is the idea of it being 100% income restricted, but doing income averaging, where some would be at the lowest 30% AMI, but then that would be balanced by some units at, at perhaps 70% of the AMI. They are looking at having those 30% AMI units being fully accessible units for people with disabilities. One of those instances, and we've talked about this a couple of times, that we need outside funding, tax credit funding, and potentially other funds to provide those 30% AMI units. And just a reminder that, you know, those are very competitive. And without a bonding bill this year, the funds aren't as plentiful. So we'll see what happens next year. But we're, we're working towards that. So that would be a big bonus if we could get more units through that HRA-owned property. And then just a reminder of the informal policy, I'd shown the chart earlier that I just used to track inclusionary housing policy. So it's, it's Lindell Plaza, Henley 1.
Wait for a second. Commissioner Sandel, have a question?
Can you go back to the prior slide? Okay, I can't keep them all straight. Tell me where Enclave is, EMI.
Sorry. So the Enclave is on 65th Street and Lindell. And the ME is at 66th Street and Stevens, between Stevens and is it First Avenue? So just east of Lindell. It's where the, I can't remember what-
You mean Nicolet?
Nicolet, sorry. Yes, Nicolet. So on the other side of the Lakes Country Buffet.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry, I, you reminded us of that. And then I failed. And the Henley 2 is at 64th and Lindell, just north of Lindell Plaza. So again, these are the, sort of the informal policy. And as we talked in Shaw in the earlier chart, that in some cases, we got new units, but in some cases, we did get preserved and improved NOA units. So those don't necessarily show up in that new unit count. And then two projects we are getting, are proposed to get contributions to the Housing and Redevelopment Fund. In the case of the Henley 1, again, it was before the formal policy had been adopted, but we were able to talk to them about at least providing some units and then giving a contribution. And then RF64, we're getting the affordability in the owner occupied units, but wanted to push the apartments if they weren't going to provide some units there as well, but to at least give a contribution to the Housing and Redevelopment Fund. And then, yeah, as was brought up a little bit earlier, our scattered site, single family ownership program. In the past, since 2012, we have had five units affordable at 60% AMI, five new construction at 80% AMI, and then five at 80% improved and preserved. And so that's houses that go to the land trust, which means we get permanent affordability out of that. So we consider that a great victory as well. So then the piece that we talked about at the HRA, we heard from several community members that, wait a minute, we'd like to, to give you some input before you move forward. We'd had the idea that, well, since it's a little bit more challenging to get input right now, especially from folks who maybe don't have great internet connection, or can't get out as well, that, you know, maybe we just go ahead and move forward with some things that we think have common agreement. But the, the feedback from the HRA was that, no, let's just get some more public input before we move forward. And so I've worked on creating a plain language fact sheet. That was a suggestion from Council member Whalen and working on getting it so it'll be bilingual. And I did share sort of an early draft with the Community Housing Team. So they, I don't know if they were able to use it in some of their conversations with folks, but they've been having conversations with renters. And so then the idea would be to share that more broadly. It is on the website and we'll be getting it out there more once I get it in Spanish. And then we're going to try an online survey and asking folks questions about priorities and what they'd like to see and what's important. and, um, what they'd like to see and what's important. And, um, and then I haven't talked to the mayor about this, but did talk to Neil and, um, the idea of doing a moment with the mayor, about it to sort of spread the word. And then as always, we would use our, um, social media, uh, sources to send out information on all these things. And then, um, wanting to maybe do some virtual listening sessions. So, um, inviting some folks to participate where we would talk more one-on-one um, in a smaller group and get feedback from folks that maybe represent a, a variety of views. So hopefully somebody representing RDEP and, um, renters, and then maybe folks who feel, you know, differently, so that we can have some good conversations. And so that's kind of where we're thinking. We've gotten some good ideas from several of you. I appreciate that. And, um, yeah, if you have some more suggestions, we're happy to do that. That's what the piece looks like. Neil and Kate helped me put it together. Tried to make it less wonky and policy, but, um, it's hard because this is, you know, this policy has some very specific things that you want feedback on. And so, um, but then there's some more general questions to, for people to think about, you know, what's most important to you. And, and I did get some initial feedback from folks. You know, a couple of things that were of note, um, was the idea of, you know, really basing rent on someone's income and what they can really afford to pay. And, um, of course, that's our rent assistance programs. And so is there a way for the in-lu payments to help, um, expand that? And, um, that isn't allowed, um, under TIF pooling you rules, but, but, but it's something that we, um, maybe can think about. And I thought that was, uh, was a good thing to point out, um, that that may be a really helpful way to provide affordable units. And I'm.
Could we pause there for a minute?
Yes.
I know I had heard from someone that maybe we could post these if sheets at parks or at like the communion rooms in some of the apartment buildings. Or maybe have like a QR code at a public place so people can, if they only have a smartphone, can it happen that way? Because not it's a computer, but they've got smartphones.
Yep, that's, um, yep, I have on my list. So yeah, it's a matter of distributing and making sure we distribute, through a variety of ways so that people can offer feedback.
Councilmember Wayland?
Um, Councilmember Troutman, were you waiting to say something?
I, I was. It's a little adjacent. I'm not sure if this is the right moment, uh, to share it or not. I just wanted to, and I, I let staff know, you know, it's something that I wanted to bring up. Yeah, and it, it just kind of relates to community feedback. Some of the conversations I've had with community and talking about affordable housing, of the topic of accessory dwelling units have come up. And I know we've made some changes in the last years to make those, uh, more feasible. But, um, but I, they were interested and I'm also really interested in exploring, um, detached, uh, accessory dwelling units. And, um, and if it's too late to enter it into this community conversation, I just wanted to put it out there. None of these policies are silver bullets, but I think it is a tool that would, um, maybe engage, different, uh, different pools of capital, some of the equity that homeowners have, but still create, um, some organic opportunities to, um, to address affordability in our, in our community. So I just wanted to put that out there as a possibility.
Um, if I can share my thought then, um, I was just going to say, I know, um, three, three years ago, when we had done the process that ended with the renter tenant protection ordinance and the first round of this, uh, that VEEP had been a huge partner. And I know there's been some staff turnover there that the people who had helped then are not there anymore. Um, but is certainly in, like, I would think helping, uh, for any clients who they do have emails to, to share the survey, um, to share the fact sheet. I, I wonder too about, um, perhaps they'd be willing to call some of their clients to get some feedback. Or perhaps they would, um, be willing to help coordinate one of the listening sessions. I guess have we reached out to them as a, a partner in this work?
Yeah, and, um, it's on my list to meet up with the new, um, staff person they have, Jessica. I'm forgetting her last name, um, but she just started a couple of weeks ago. So in giving her some time, I, I, um, I'm hesitant to ask VEEP to do too much for us, given the amount of rent assistance work they're doing right now. But I, I certainly would have a conversation with them and see what their capacity is. Right. I mean, and there are other partners, Mira, uh, you know, it's sort of a given partner that I would reach out to and, and, um, ask to participate and, um, or help with this. And, um, you know, we often use our Kids at Home Program, um, families, they're excellent feedback. But so, yep, thank you for the reminder about VEEP. I just am a little hesitant to, I don't want to over, um, yeah, uh, overwork them. But I will certainly, um, thank you for the reminder. Um, when I have a conversation, we can have a, talk about that.
And I would say we would, we would take help from anywhere we can get it. Uh, we'd like to, uh, we'd like to talk with the housing team folks. You know, we, anywhere we can get help, we'll take it.
And I, I will share, um, I won't speak for them, but I, I know Dave Snyder is leading the way on some phone banking with the housing team. That a few of us had door knocked last summer with them in several different apartment buildings. And had, they had a list of about 70 people who they'd connected with at the door knocks. Um, and so they, in the last couple of weeks, um, had started talking to them. I don't know what the, the follow-up is, but I think they had had, um, at least a handful of people who are interested in more, uh, more conversation around this. So certainly when the, um, the final bilingual fact sheet is finalized, can share that with them again. And, um, yeah, just continue that partnership too.
Yep. Uh, you know, the other piece that I think can come through this process is, you know, we've talked a lot about trying to, um, you know, renters are very much an important part of our community and to make sure that that's conveyed. And that was one of the pieces of feedback I got from a resident who, um, emailed today. And so, you know, that can be also always in our mind when we're doing this work. Is to remind folks of who our community is and that everybody has value. And we all need a quality place to live that we can afford. So, so, um, if there's other feedback or things you want me to take, I guess our vision is that we'll be doing this kinds of, um, input the next couple of months and then come back to you maybe in November. Report on that feedback. And then you can kind of give us direction of where you might want to take any revisions. If, um, you have any thoughts on that, if that's sort of an acceptable plan or.
All right. Um, I can't see everybody all at the same time. Is there anyone that wanted to speak up? I had a tangential one that it's not really inclusionary housing policy, but, um, there's been some feedback. You know, right now the governor has the eviction moratorium thing. And one of the pieces of feedback from that is that when that comes off, it would be helpful if people had to have like maybe 14 days notice instead of seven, so that they'd have time to prepare. So it's not part of this, but I just want to throw it out there for people to think about what the requirements might be for giving people notice so they have time to prepare. And I don't need an answer right now. I just wanted to make sure it was out in the airwaves. Is there anybody else that wants to add feedback before we move on?
Yep, yep, it's Maria. Could you see me? I'd like to add something.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Um, I, I know how it is. It is hard to see everybody on, when the screen is shared. So I like, I would just wanted to say I like the plan for outreach. And I think doing, if there's a way that we can take like the plain language information and, um, reach out to our different networks across the community and kind of just take it and run with it and, and, um, and work with other community groups to put that out and get feedback, that would be great. Because I'm thinking of a bunch of, you know, different apartments, different organizations, that if we said, hey, here's kind of the sheet and, and just an easy way for folks to plug into that. That's not, that's in addition to the online-based, um, that bilingual sheet. That would be really nice if that's something that, you know, you can share with commissioners, with council members, with community leaders and organizations, um, like Director Stark said, getting as much help as possible. But if there's kind of like a little, just that one pager probably is going to be the one, um, that we can use. That would be great because so many folks don't have access to the online platforms. And then I just wanted to, I know Councilmember Troutman talked about the accessory dwelling units. And then I think someone else spoke. So I just wanted to, um, know what staff's response was to the detached accessory dwelling unit, um, comment, because that is something too that I'm really interested in. It's a way, um, to help our residents out on so many different levels. But I just wanted to hear more of a response on that.
Yeah. So, you know, we've been, um, making some initial steps. The HRA has added an incentive to the transformation loan program. It is very costly to add one, uh, unit. And, um, you don't necessarily get it back in your appraised value. Um, so we've been working on that. Um, there are some code issues, um, that we need to continue to work on. It took a backseat, um, with the pandemic and, um, but I, I know that, um, our housing specialists, it's still in their minds and, and they are working with, they, they're, they think they have a, a person who's going to use that transformation loan and move forward. She's had some delays and, but so, so we're hoping to have that. And then the, um, Family Housing Fund is very interested in that topic as well. And so they've been providing us some support. And we had some plans for a workshop and different things that again, got kind of ground to a halt. And, um, you know, other priorities just came first. But it is, it is very much on our list. And I, you know, just looking at this chart, this is sort of, uh, you know, sort of the plan, the overall plan for how we work with our apartment communities. And even though it's not an apartment, I think it was good to point out that it's a, a rental opportunity, a way to increase units in a, a small way and some that, you know, belong somewhere on here, and maybe under diversified housing choices, just so it doesn't fall off, right, that our list, that that's one of our, um, things that we'd like to support. So I will.
Thank you.
We like to pilot things, you know, give something a try. And I think the accessory dwelling unit would be a great pilot, uh, where, you know, Julie had mentioned some of the funds that are going into our Housing and Redevelopment Fund. Uh, maybe that would be an appropriate use, uh, to, to try something. And, um, you know, we did that, it's probably been five or six years now with an accessible house. Um, and so we, every year or two, we try to come up with a, a little different way to do, uh, one of our housing programs.
Well, and we actually, um, Richard rediscovered, we have some, um, lots, actually. It's been a little while, but, um, we'd like one of them to, we'd like to put it out there saying, you know, we want something that's a demonstration project, either an ADU or something with, um, unique efficiency, um, features. Or we had one other idea, I can't remember. But so we're going to try to put that out there. We had hoped that Habitat had been moving in this direction as well. And we thought, well, this could be a great Habitat project, but they are really pausing their new construction because they, you know, can't do volunteers right now. And it's, so they're just kind of in a pause mode, which is unfortunate. Um, but, because, yeah, so they hadn't gotten very far on their project either. And I've had to, to stop. But, um, so we are hoping to, yeah, maybe have a pilot that way too, through one of our, one of our lots.
All right, Councilmember Wayland?
Um, I was just going to say quickly, I know, um, we've talked about this before, but another thing I don't really see rec- uh, represented in the, the list here. And it probably fits in with four and supporting renters and apartment communities. But just the idea that, um, I'm very aware here that we, I, I don't know everyone well enough to say there are no renters in this group, but I know enough people to know we are certainly in majority homeowners. Um, and so I, I do want to see, and I think the, the reason the engagement process is so important is to give renters more of a, a voice in the policies and decisions that impact them. And I wonder if, um, if we can make that, and, and maybe it's not a shared goal by others, but to, to make it more, like we've talked about, how do we, how do we make sure renters can have a voice in things? And I, I want to continue to improve on that, um, so that it's not just, like I, we've got some good points in that section four about, um, addressing the like stigma that some people have or the prejudice some people have against renters. Um, but I think also like empowering renters to be decision-makers and influencers in our community, um, is really worth doing. Because I, I think, uh, just a small example that we, in this conversation, we talked about what the barriers are to getting a two-bedroom affordable unit. But we didn't talk about from the renters' perspective, like, I, I need a two-bedroom unit. Can I afford to live here? Or is Richfield like not a place I can live because there's no units that I can afford? And so I, I think, um, I just would like to see more, like literally more renters involved in this and also more, more attention paid to the renters' perspective and kind of how they're approaching. And I, I, I'm not saying we're not thinking about that, but it, that it needs to be more front and center in these conversations.
I would just, I would just say.
Okay.
I was just going to say, I, I agree, I agree with Councilmember Wayland's, um, sentiment so wholeheartedly. Um, it's a really good, it's a good point. Um, I also was curious, um, when we were talking about the ADUs, was that currently just for attached or is that also considering detached dwelling units? As we're kind of doing that, looking for those piloting projects? I just wasn't sure what the state of the ordinances were.
You, you can do both.
Oh, great.
Yep. It's more cost-effective to do it within your unit, but within your house. Okay. Are there any other thoughts or? I'll just quickly, you know, we've been using this work plan and just a reminder of the things that we have accomplished. And kind of what, what we're in progress. Um, you know, we added COVID response that became very much an important thing in April, May. And, you know, still, still working on that, um, just to make sure, um, like, uh, Chair Supple brought up the eviction moratorium and, and rent assistance. And, um, we'll be doing a mailing soon to make sure everybody knows there are rent assistance funds available. But so that kind of got thrown into the work plan because it did really put a pause on some of our other efforts. But so this is really just a reminder of, um, the things that we have been working on and, um, continue to work on to strengthen our apartment communities. But, um, you know, um, the comment about empowerment and, and the renters' voice. You know, I think that might be something that we can, um, work on through the, you know, apartment liaison program was something I was working on in February and March. And then it just again got, we pressed pause and we weren't sure if we were going to maybe need to use that money for rent assistance. And so we just kind of put a pause on any new initiatives. But I think that's something that we definitely still want to do. And, um, maybe that's where some of that empowerment can, um, can come. So anyway, that was just a reminder of, of what we have worked on and continue to work on. And, um, yeah, we're nearing the end, but I, some good feedback and we'll, we'll be back in a couple of months.
There was also a comment in the chat, uh, maybe that, um, area near the roundabout by Portland. It could be a tiny home community. So that could be another pilot project.
Yeah, I saw that. Yeah.
For yours.
Staff for all your hard work and thank you to everybody for all their thoughts and ideas. And please giving us lots of thoughts and ideas. Any, and anything else for the good of the cause?
Just a huge thank you, especially to, uh, to Julie Urban. I know it's an incredible amount of work and really thorough. And thank you to, to you and Director Stark for, for all, all your work in this area.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, thank you. And in a few minutes here, we will go to the HRA meeting. The meeting stand, our work session stands adjourned. Thank you. The meeting stand, or work session stands adjourned. Thank you.